I'm biotic, yes. I love it. I love it, there we come back. Thanks.
From your wife's orders too.
You didn't get married yet, did you?
Not yet.
Abandoning us. God, you were abandoning us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 25, 2025. I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of prayer by our esteemed colleague Doug Helsner.
Let's pray together, please. Our Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for each one that's here. Thank you for our country. Thank you for our Declaration of Independence that calls upon the Creator as the place of our equal standing as human beings. I just pray that you would be with each word that's spoken tonight from the bench here and from the public, that it'll be words that are helpful and words that that will push good forward. We ask again that you would give us wisdom beyond our experience and help us to do what's really in the best long-term interest for our county and for our state and for our country, for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen. Would you kindly stand, remove your hats, place your hand over your heart, and recite our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Helsner.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton is absent. Commissioner Ponovich.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Form is present.
Thank you. Item number five on our meeting agenda is approval of agenda. May I have a get a motion?
So moved. Move the agenda, Helsner.
Thank you. Motion by Helsner, support by Commissioner Gross. All those in favor kindly voice vote, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing an eight to zero with one absent, it passes. We're now on to employee recognition. The first one is Kelly Johnson from Veteran Services Department. I believe it's Commissioner Gross that's in the spotlight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I get started, I just have to say that it's truly an honor and a pleasure to participate in these employee recognitions. We have over 700 people that work for Livingston County and work for you. And many of them go unrecognized during the course of the year. But fortunately, we have some who do outstanding work in many different areas. And those, that outstanding work is brought to our attention and we're able to recognize that. So with that, I call up Kelly Johnson from our Veteran Services Division. Kelly, happy to meet you.
Happy to meet you.
Okay. Kelly has been selected as our quarterly, second quarterly for employee recognition. And I've got a little bit of information here that will inform you as to why she was selected. Kelly has served in the Veterans Affairs Office for six years, beginning as an administrative specialist and working her way up to a Veterans Counselor III. For just a bit of background, our Veterans Counselors assist veterans, their dependents and survivors, with preparing claims for services. A Veterans Counselor III is the most advanced counselor level, requiring expert qualifications, knowledge of the complex VA system. And as you can imagine, this job requires extensive client interaction, showing know-how and dedication to get results. Kelly received six nominations from member of the public, all raving about our Veteran Affairs Office, but especially Kelly. They all described Kelly with words like knowledgeable, professional, caring, and even amazing, invaluable, irreplaceable. Two of the nominations caught the attention of the committee that really spotlighted both Kelly's spirit and her impact on the veterans in this community. First came from a hesitant Army veteran who had been discouraged after hearing stories from friends who had fallen victim to predatory companies saying that they could help veterans get their benefits. His doctor told him about our Livingston County Veterans Administration group. And although unsure, he decided to give it a try. He got paired up with Kelly, who jumped right on his case. He says, Kelly took me from being a discouraged veteran with no rating in the case in February to an 80% rating in less than 90 days. I never believed that God sends angels, but as it turned out, he did. Thank you for being the angel when I needed it most. Another submission from a combat veteran from Vietnam had tried to apply for benefits in the past, but had been treated poorly and given the runaround. Unfortunately, he had given up on ever receiving the benefits that he had earned. But when complications arose due to PTSD and Agent Orange exposure, he was forced to try again. That's when Kelly stepped in. He says, the difference is like night and day. She reviews what you need to do. She answers phone messages and emails quickly and truly shows how she cares. She made a world of difference for me. Kelly deserves more than five stars. Continuing, the committee agreed with those veterans. And because Kelly does not just assist veterans in accessing benefits, which she does and does very well, she rebuilds people's faith bit by bit with her compassion and positive attitude. She restores their dignity with her compassion and dedication to get them the benefits that they deserve. And she does it quietly, without fanfare, day after day. It's her job. But you could tell from these nominations that it's more than a job for her. It is a calling to help those who need just a little lift up. And that's what the committee felt deserved our appreciation and our recognition. Ramon Baca, the Director of Veteran Affairs, unfortunately could not be here tonight, but he submitted a statement to be read in his absence. To the members of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to recognize excellence across Livingston County departments. Acknowledging the hard work and dedication of our employees is both meaningful and deeply motivating for all. Regrettably, I'm unable to attend in person due to prior commitments, but would like to offer a few words about one of our outstanding team members, Kelly Johnson. Kelly's work ethic and unwavering commitment to our veterans are truly exceptional. She consistently sets a high standard for others to follow and has served as a remarkable mentor to fellow Veteran Service Officers. Her dedication not only uplifts our department, but also makes a tangible difference in the lives of those that we serve. I am incredibly proud to work alongside her and deeply grateful that she is part of Livingston County. We are fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations, Kelly. So we've given Kelly a certificate here, and unfortunately, it was signed with an auto pin. Line up so we can take your picture.
Sounds good. Anywhere in particular?
In the center of the middle.
Come on. Thank you.
We're on to item number seven of our meeting agenda. It's entitled correspondence. Any Commissioner want to bring to our attention correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on to number eight, which is call to the public. This is a three-minute time limit where a member of the public is allowed to inform us of anything the person thinks is important. And it's the duty of the Board of Commissioners to do this by a 1976 Michigan statute. And we're supposed to listen. Additionally, it's our sworn oath of every Commissioner up here to support and defend our two constitutions, which both clearly enunciate the God-given right to free speech. So the call to the public is also free speech. With that said, we go with cards in the room. If you need the cards still, you have time. Madam Clerk, please call the cards.
So we have Kat from Dansville and Jenny from Chelsea, and then Rachel from Williamston Township and Ashley from Deerfield Township.
Thank you.
Are those on? Are the microphones on? Okay. If you could, so that the people on Zoom can hear you.
My name is Kat Vanduser.
And my name is Jenny Spire. We are for-
You can pick it right up.
Pick it right up.
So you don't have to bear it over.
Oh, I love that. We are 4H Program coordinators in Livingston County. And we came here tonight, we want to thank you for your support of MSU Extension and Livingston County 4H. And then we also have some of our teen leaders and teen ambassadors here. And they want to tell you a little bit about our program and about the impact it has on their lives.
Good evening, Commissioners and guests. My name is Rachel Pollack Newsom. I started 4H as a cloverbud, and this is now my seventh year. This year has been a strong one for Livingston County's 4H Program. At the Fallerville Family Fair, 22 of our 24 clubs participated with 483 of 512 enrolled youth exhibitors. Project, exhibiting projects, the highest enrollment in the past five years. Our program is powered by 190 gold volunteers who give time year-round and 78 silver volunteers who step up in for, in for short-term events like the 4H Kitchen at the fair. Their dedication makes these opportunities possible. More than 40 youth represented our county at state-level events, including the 4H and FFA livestock judging, judging state contest, the Michigan 4H State Horse Show, 4H Exploration Days, and the statewide youth leadership institute. This year, we also piloted a livestock judging contest at the fair. As President of the Animal Project Committee, I proposed and led this project with the support of 4H volunteers and staff. The contest drew 36 participants, and many are now excited to join our new livestock judging team. Our goal is to send multiple teams to the 2026 4H and FFA livestock judging state contest. Overall, this year shows growth in youth participation, strong volunteer support, and exciting new opportunities. On behalf of all of us in 4H, I want to thank you, our county commissioners, for your support of MSU Extension and 4H. Your investment makes these opportunities possible for youth across Livingston County.
Thank you.
Hello, Livingston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Ashley Bernardin, and I am from Heartland, Michigan. I have been involved in 4H for eight years. I'm a part of the Rangers 4H Club, the Teen Ambassador Program, as well as Livingston County 4H Council. I would like to thank you for your support of both the Michigan State University Extensions and the 4H Programs. Because of 4H, I can speak comfortably in a public setting. I work harder to be the best version of myself. I push myself to be better than I was yesterday. Because of 4H, I can help encourage change. I grew my resilience and my compassion. Because of 4H, I am able to give back to the community. As I help out with all the different events, such as the 4H Kitchen, Gem and Mineral Concessions, and Rural King Customer Appreciation Day, it makes me feel good knowing that I'm making a difference in a community that supports me. I wanted to quickly thank you again for your generous support of the Michigan State University Extensions and the 4H Programs. I hope you have a great rest of your evenings. Now, will you please join me in the 4H pledge?
I pledge my head to clearer thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, my health to better living, for my club, my community, my country, my world.
Thank you.
Steve Williams, Marion Township.
Good evening, Commissioners. First, I want to commend you for recognizing Kelly Johnson. She actually helped with my own disability claim. She was great, she was professional, very good to work with. I'm very happy that she's still Livingston County employee. I had a different topic to talk to you about tonight, very specific to budgeting, the upcoming budget year. But instead, I need to talk to you about my stepson Gavin, who's seven, who is missing. Just like the Morley boy up in Chiwasi County, we dropped him off at the Novi Police Department at 5:00 on Friday afternoon, per the new court order, and he hasn't been heard from since. Now, there's a judgment divorce between these two people that requires the allowance of parenting phone time any day that somebody doesn't have physical custody of the child. It's been denied for three days. OFW messages are not being answered for three days. We had friends that drove by the house in Sterling Heights, and it's been emptied. My wife checked with friend of the court, there's been no new address provided. We don't know where the boy is. This is not the first time it's happened. This guy has lived in six houses in six years. Last year, just a little before this time, it happened, and it went on for weeks. And it was under the jurisdiction of Judge Longsworth at that time. Now, we have a gal in place that I'm paying thousands of dollars a month to, who's supposed to represent the child, and she is silent on this. She's got access to those friend of the court or to those, our family wizard messages. There's no sign of the child. There's, there's nowhere to know where he has been. And we know that twice he's been taken out of state to Florida without any notice or permission or notification of his location, which again is in the judgment of divorce. It says specifically that when Gavin is not staying at one of the two homes, he has to, the parent has to tell the other parent where he is. I mean, I don't know where else to go with this, and I defy anyone to tell me that I can't bring this before the Board of Commissioners during the call to the public because it has to do with the judges. All right? This is a serious incident. Who knows? All you have to do is Google to find kids that have been kidnapped by a parent and later killed. Think about yourself as a parent and not knowing where your child is for days at a time. All right? And yet you have a judge who seems intent on punishing me and my wife for some unknown reason and not enforcing multiple court orders that were already in place. Remember, this is the fourth of four judges, circuit court judges, two in McComb, two here. And this is the only one that decided, I can't go to the, well, remember, we were there for a PPO. All right, thank you.
I have no further cards.
Krista, is there any Zoom hands?
Yes, Commissioner, I have Cindy McNevich.
Ms. McNevich, name, address, and then you get three minutes.
Hi, Cindy McNevich, Hamburg Township. My address is 3140 Sheehan Road, Pinkney, Michigan.
Thank you.
I am talking today about the resolution on the Agenda 2025-08-113. It's about raising the fees of the animal shelter. Just a few meetings ago, there was much discussion on raising the fees for the Health Department. And you did not vote on that resolution. It was tabled, and I just wondered what the difference is with raising the fees for the animal shelter versus the Health Department. I also want to talk to you about Resolution 2025-08-115. That is about the use of the opioid settlement. I talked to you about this during the Finance Committee two weeks ago. One of the conditions, you want to use, you want to use 125,000 of the opioid settlement funds to finance the Medication Assisted Treatment Program, also known as MAT. It is a good program, and I do want to see you continue to use it. But one of the conditions is you cannot use these opioid settlement funds to supplement other government funds that would have been used for the same purpose. This has been budgeted in this year's budget and 2026's budget. So this means that they must be, you can use it to create new programs or supplement existing programs and other services, rather than simply replacing the funds that would have been appropriated or expended anyway. The MAT treatment program is an ongoing program, and it has been budgeted. Oh, I've already said that. So I look forward to hearing your discussion on that matter because you said that you were going to contact in a special attorney for that. Thank you.
Krista, go ahead.
I have Mary Wetalick.
Ms. Wetalick, name and township, and then you have three minutes. Can you hear us?
Yes, sorry for my delay. My name's Mary Wetalick. I live in Green Oak Township. I am heartened to hear about the Constitution Week Declaration, and I think this is very timely because our constitution is currently under direct attack by those who have searched for every weakness, every loophole in the Constitution in their quest for absolute power. And this quest for power is fueled by the dehumanization of our brothers and sisters in God. The prayer today, led by Commissioner Helsner, asked for us to have equal standing as human beings. We are witnessing cruel imprisonments to countless many who do not deserve that treatment. But to list a few, the many ways our constitution is under attack, cancellation of due process, National Guard deployed to cities under false pretenses with the promise of many more deployments, declaring national emergencies in order to circumvent laws, an executive order to cancel birthright citizenship, and coming soon, I guess, executive order to declare how states, to dictate how states will run elections. And then the, the, the ways that free speech is being shut down through, at universities, through the threat of losing research funding, at law firms, through the threat of loss of access, at media outlets, through the threat of loss of FCC approval, corporations, which, okay, they're coming with gifts to get tariff concessions, and also using Israel as a weapon to silence voices on the suffering of the Palestinian citizens. And the day one insult to this supposed law and order party pardoned all the January 6 rioters. Police were killed that day, hundreds were injured. And then all the lawyers that worked on their prosecution were fired. And one of those rioters, which he was heard yelling, "Kill them," about the police, is now serving in a top position in our Justice Department. It's all about intimidation, a means to show that they have absolute power. Congress under Republican leadership has been completely neutered thanks to the Christian nationalists at the helm of the People's House. And the tech bros are all on this too. They say the heck with the Constitution. They love-
You have 15 seconds remaining?
Well, the tech bros love this disruption because they think they will run our country once the Constitution is completely dismantled. So yes, let's have a Constitution Week, but also remember, our constitution is under direct attack right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Krista, do you see any other hands? I do now.
Do not, Commissioner.
Thank you, that's confirmation. We're going to close the call to the public with that and move on to item number nine. It's entitled Approval of Minutes. 9A reads minutes dated July 28, 2025, and 9B reads minutes dated August 11, 2025. Can I get a motion for both A and B of item nine?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes, Sample.
Second.
Motion by Sample, second by Ponovich. All those in favor kindly voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got eight, zero, one, it passes. Both A and B. We're on to item number 10, which is tabled items from previous meetings. I see none on the agenda, but if a Commissioner wants to bring one up, that's fine. Seeing no hands, we're going on to number 11, which is reports. Any Commissioner have a report they'd like to present to our group? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three things I wanted to share with my colleague. I had a conversation with Michigan Association of Counties Representative Samantha Gibson regarding court funding that's, and the state legislature is taking up court funding again. There are more discussions, you know, the thing that caught my eye that was most troubling to me is that it was discussion about maintenance of effort funding on behalf of counties. It, it appears that the direction may be that, you know, counties will be on the hook to fund courts at a level that's an average of the prior three years, the three years prior. That's the same thing that the Public Defender Office, the level of funding. There, I expressed concern with that to Ms. Gibson because our courts are way overstaffed. I've, I've said that for years, and it's actually not me saying it, it's the court's own scale organization, the Supreme Court Administrative Office has, has that conclusion. So sticking our taxpayers with having to pay for an average of the last three years is patently unfair. I conveyed that to Ms. Gibson. I will also be conveying that in writing to our state representatives. So that's item number one. Item number two, I'm disappointed, I wanted to share my disappointment with the statements of a former Judge Burris, who believes that the Board of Commissioners has the authority to regulate speech at call the public. We do not. In fact, I, I have the MCL 15.263. I have a copy of it, I'm going to provide it to the clerk to put into the minutes. And it, I've highlighted Section 5. It says, you know, a person may be permitted to address a public body under rules established and recorded by the public body. The legislator, legislature or House of Legislature may provide by rule, the right to address may be limited to prescribe times at hearings and committee meetings only. There is nothing in the Open Meetings Act that says the Commissioners have the authority to- There is nothing in the Open Meetings Act that says the Commissioners have the authority to exclude speech. And I'm, I, um, will be inviting the judge, um, to a commission meeting to explain where in statute he sees the ability for the legislative body here to squash people's right to, uh, to grieve their government. So that's item number two. Item number three, I, um, you, I had already mentioned. I had published, um, reports on hate crimes, fake hate crimes in Livingston County. I wanted to share that, uh, a couple of, um, constituents had expressed, um, great surprise that, um, the level of, um, I'll say falsehoods being spread by the media here in Livingston County. Um, in fact, while one media source, um, had actually cited a fake hate crime as a real hate crime to denigrate the citizens of our county. I think it's appalling that, um, our media is taking this active role in smearing our county, and I, um, would hope that they, um, des- cease and desist from that. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Any further reports? Commissioner Helsman, you have the floor.
I have a report. Uh, uh, a while back, we authorized a, um, mural to go on the EMS building in Fallerville in honor of Charlie Gehringer. Uh, well, uh, a tiger, well-known tiger of the past. He grew up in Fallerville, uh, and, uh, the mural is about two-thirds done at this point. It's, uh, very nicely done. I've talked to some of the people that are, uh, doing the painting. Uh, they're, some of them are local. I know maybe all of them are local people. And, uh, you'll have to go back, go by Fallerville and, uh, see the EMS, the north wall of the EMS building. Takes up the whole, the whole wall. It's very, very nicely done. Yeah.
Thank you. I have two quick things to report. I signed an amendment pursuant to Resolution Authority on the emergency, emerging health threat grant that's being used by our Livingston County Health Department. They were eligible to get seven thousand, or seventy-four thousand dollars. That's going to help them to get through the, uh, rest of the calendar year. And I was assured by Director Bolang that it would go a hundred percent to wages and nothing to, uh, vaccines. I also signed a state police amended grant that's been in effect since nineteen ninety-seven for road patrol on secondary roads. Doesn't mean the, uh, uh, they're somehow not paved. It means that they're just not expressways and major highways. That's a hundred and fifty-three thousand more dollars for the sheriff. Those were both amended grants, and, uh, that money's coming in. Any other Commissioner? Commissioner, uh, Fiani?
Thank you. It troubles me to report this evening of another instance that's been relayed to me of the mayhem and chaos in Susan Longsworth's courtroom, in my opinion. It was shared with me that there was a divorce case taking place. It had proceeded for about eight weeks or so, and Susan Longsworth decided to throw the mother in jail. In doing so, she never provided any type of due process, never provided a hearing. And it's my understanding that even the way she documented it was not performed properly. This is what was shared with me, and when the mother did go to jail, the case was then turned over to a different judge based upon the circumstances. It's my understanding from how it was relayed to me that that judge, after reviewing the case, found that almost the entirety of how it was handled and documented was improper and incorrect. And with that being the case, it's my understanding, in my opinion, that was then nullified, and the mother was released from jail. Additionally, when the mother was placed in jail by Susan Longsworth, not only was it done improperly, but there was actually no sentence guidelines or timeframe. So it was an indefinite sentence. In my opinion, this is just a severe lack of judicial competence. But then I also wonder, is it simply just a level of arrogance on Susan Longsworth's part, in my opinion? I'm hopeful that things will change in her courtroom, and I'm hopeful that the residents of the county receive better justice.
Any further reports? We're on to eleven sub A, a report from Southeast Michigan Work, Michigan Works. Any other report?
Good afternoon or evening, uh, Commissioners. Uh, this is an honor and a pleasure to be back here again a year later to, uh, present, uh, how we have done as an organization. Uh, my name is Shamar Herron. I'm the Executive Director of Michigan Work Southeast. With me, I have my colleague Dawn Alrie, who is your Service Center Manager at our twelve-hundred Byron location. Uh, she does a fantastic job along with the rest of her team. We also have Misty Shalters, uh, our Deputy Director, and so this is the brains of the operation here. Uh, and, and I'm just here for my dash and good looks. And so, um, again, this will cover the years starting in July of twenty twenty-four and go through, uh, June, uh, thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So we say two thousand twenty-five. It does split between two years. But this is specifically focused for our work in Livingston County. So next slide, please. Before we get started, uh, as I believe you all know, uh, you have two representatives that sit on our board, our Consortium Board, which is our administrative board. And so I want to send a very special thank you, uh, to Commissioner Helsman and Commissioner Nakagiri. Uh, the role of that board is to administer our funds and be our fiscal agent. So as we receive, uh, pass-through funds from the state of Michigan, uh, and funds directly from the state and a few other sources, uh, our fiscal agent, that board, is responsible for reviewing, approving, and ensuring that those dollars are being spent appropriately. Uh, they also approve very specific contracts such as leases, uh, and any contract we enter into over a threshold, uh, that represents any work being done on behalf of our entire organization. Uh, and then lastly, uh, that board and that body is our employer of record, meaning they are directly responsible for all eighty-two employees, uh, by way of our PA seven agreement that we have, uh, through the Michigan Constitution. Next slide, please. Really quickly, uh, as you may know, we cover five counties, Hillsdale, Jackson-Linaway, Livingston, uh, and Washtenaw Counties. I just checked the numbers. Our population has went up in our region. We are now at eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand in terms of population. Uh, our labor force has grown as well, but the individuals that are eligible for work, which is different than the labor force, is, uh, around seven hundred thousand. So we're working to finally gather the numbers on the labor force, and that's individuals who are of age to work and actively seeking work. That's different than those who are eligible to work, meaning they are over sixteen years, fourteen years old. Uh, our poverty sits at roughly twelve percent throughout the region. Uh, thirty-five percent of that population, uh, is within the ALIS threshold. Uh, and so hopefully, I believe you all know about the ALIS population, which is those who have one or more jobs and still can't make ends meet. And then lastly, thirty-seven percent of the workers in the region travel more than thirty minutes to work, and fifteen percent travel more than sixty minutes to work. I appreciate that bullet point because it shows that individuals will travel to gain and maintain the employment they need to support their families. So sometimes we have, you know, our county lines in our mind, but people will travel beyond county lines to make, uh, their ends meet. Next slide, please. And now, uh, Dawn is going to share a little bit of our work directly with our, uh, career seekers.
All right. My voice isn't quite as booming as Shamar, so hopefully. Um, so I'm really excited to share some things about more what we've been doing here in Howell. And, um, we have just an awesome team that we've built here in Howell. We're small, but we are mighty. There's just a few of us that work in our office. And I have a couple of stories up here that we call success stories. There, um, some of the individuals that have come in, that have received our services, that have been a success. So like, the one person in the, the blue box there didn't want his picture taken, but he had come into the service center and he needed to do some things with unemployment. And he said he was just devastated that he lost his job. Anna Marie at the front desk, she, you know, helped him out, and then she connected him with one of our career advisors, Eleanor, who happened to that moment, like, hey, I have time today. We don't even need to make an appointment for later. Let's go back. Let's talk. She, um, got him fully enrolled. He ended up going to school to be a CDL driver, and he is now employed and is, has just been very much saying, we, I am so grateful for the services that I provided and that we provided, and he is so thankful, um, to what is able to help folks out. Um, and then this other gentleman too, he, uh, worked with, um, one of our career advisors. Her name is Patty. And she does a lot of our workshops and works, um, with a lot of folks that are on unemployment and tries to help them figure out their next steps. And, um, this gentleman too, he was just so grateful, and, you know, these people come to me. I'm the manager, and they're like, I just want to tell you about your employee and how, how wonderful they are and all the help that they gave me. So i- it's just, it's, it's just phenomenal to hear this, those stories. So I wanted to share some of those with you. Um, and then one of our other team members, her name is Jen. She works primarily, oh, next slide. Oh, got it. Thank you. Um, she works primarily with what we call our youth population. And in Howell, basically, it's eighteen to twenty-four in the service center. Um, and she is phenomenal with these young people, especially those that they've, they've had a harder time. And so some of them have substance abuse. Some of them, they've been kicked out of their home, and, and it may be either the parents aren't stable or they weren't. And they come to the center, and Jen works with them and helps them figure out a new trajectory. And, um, she actually, along with other team members who work with youth in our other counties that we represent, um, they won, um, JMG Specialist Awards, Jobs for Michigan Grad, which is one of the programs that we do. And, um, those kids just, you know, I, we see them come in with nothing, and they walk out, and they're successful. They have a job that can support themselves. Um, we're also very involved in our community, and I know I've seen some of you out and about when we're doing things in the community. So I actually have to read the list because I can't remember. It's not like just in my brain. So if you don't mind the next slide, um, some of our community involvement. Um, a youth employment fair is held at LES A. We attend that every single year, and we get a lot of students that come to us, and we end up working with them after that. Construction Career Days, Operating Engineers, Stuff the Bus, where we help with, um, getting stuff to fill backpacks for kids who are in need when they're going back to school. That just happened in August. Um, Make a Plan Days at Howell High School. We go and we present to the kids about, you know, ideas for careers and what we can do to help them. And if they're not interested in the type of service we have, or maybe they're going to four-year university, we can point them in the direction of where they can find financial aid. Um, we do a Veterans Career Fair on this coming up in September. Again, that'll be the second one. Trunk or Treat for, uh, foster kids. We worked with DHS on that. Um, we also go into the jail once a month, and we do a lot of workshops, and we've worked with those who are going to be getting out soon, and then we see them in our center as soon as they get out and help them find employment. So, and that's been real successful. Um, another thing that we did this last year that, um, I'm actually quite proud of because it was our first year, and we had over, I can't remember if I put that on here. Nope. We had, I think, ninety-eight students that showed up on our first year for a Discovery Day's healthcare. And what it is, it was just a one-day event, and we had a lot of different healthcare providers that came in, and they taught the kids what it would be like to have a career in that industry, the kind of, um, education that they need, what it, you know, what it would take to do that job. And it was very successful. We partnered with, um, LES A on that as well. I think that was the answer. You can have that.
Excellent. So all of these fantastic services that Dawn just described and all the help that we provide to the career seekers, what exactly does this mean for Livingston County? So this slide right here, um, shows what we were able to accomplish with our twenty-four, twenty-five program year. Um, that first bullet point there is we work to remove these barriers for our career seekers is one that I'm most proud of. That was a hundred and forty-eight percent increase in their wages from the time that they entered into our programs, received those services, and then exited. And that really does a lot for the families in this community. And so we had, uh, speaking of families, almost two hundred that we helped grow in their economic standing, remove those barriers, and help them have stable employment. And this statistic here with the dollars, those are direct dollars that went to remove those barriers. So it could have been as simple as maybe an individual just started working as a medical assistant and needed scrubs and shoes, all the way up to car repairs, so that they can get back and forth to work. And so that number right there represents what went back to the families here in Livingston County. And our primary customer that we help is our employer community. And so all of this means nothing if the individuals aren't retaining their employment. And so that statistic there shows that after supporting them, moving, removing barriers, we were able to help these individuals, eighty-four percent of them, retain their employment, um, twelve months post, uh, exit in the program, which, which is significant. That, that really helps our employer community, but it also helps that individual grow in their skills and their wages. Um, when we talk about barriers, we have our top five here that Livingston County folks that come in that work with us. These are the top five. There's at least a dozen more, but these are the ones that rise to the top in terms of what are preventing folks from having that stable employment. And so our programs and services help individuals with transportation. Um, obviously, the vocational skills, we'll send them for, um, you know, training in the classroom to on-the-job apprenticeship opportunities, their work attire. Sometimes they come to us and they're, they're like, hey, I completed this nursing, but I need two hundred and twenty dollars to take the NCLEX, which is the registration exam that a nurse needs to take. They don't have those liquid dollars, and so we're able to help remove that barrier so they can test and become a nurse in the area. And then, um, we have a, a level of homelessness in Livingston County that we're able to help support by working with our area partners and providing resources to help that individual, um, start earning a wage and, and really making some, um, choices that help them remove that homelessness barrier. Next slide. Um, so right now, uh, I've had the pleasure of working with our business services team as the interim Business Services Manager, and we wanted to highlight a couple of success stories of local employers to Livingston County. Um, so this first one here, they're a small, um, speech services therapy center, and they applied for Going Pro Talent Fund. They had some training needs that aligned with the direction of the state's, uh, training program for Going Pro, and they were awarded ten thousand dollars, and that significantly helped their staff upskill so they could continue to see additional, um, patients there and provide those services, which again just, um, helps with the community thriving. And then Wilson Marine, um, this is one of my favorite companies here. They're just very innovative, and they're exciting to work with. We were able to, um, register their first ever in the state of Michigan, a marine services tech apprenticeship program. So that's a non-traditional apprenticeship program. We were able to provide intermediary services so that they could get their training program across the finish line with USDOL. And now that is, um, a standard training program that we can then utilize with other marinas throughout the state. So very exciting for Wilson Marine. Next slide. You know, earlier today, we heard about the services that, um, Kelly was, was providing to her veterans. This right here is an example and a success story of when our partnerships come together. And so we had a career seeker that had come in down on their luck, and we worked with them and connected them to our Veterans Career Advisors. So these individuals are state employees that are co-located in our American Job Centers. And between the career advisor, the veterans' career advisor, and our business services representative who works with our employers, understands what the needs are within the community, they were able to connect this individual to employment and has significantly changed his life. And so I love being able to demonstrate this because it just shows that collaboration. We, we can't do it all by ourselves, but when we come- We, we can't do it all by ourselves, but when we come together, we're able to really make a difference here. So. Uh, next slide. And um, award-winning, so we have uh, Jen who received the award for Jobs for Michigan Graduates. But our business services team was recognized for their innovation as well, specifically with the Marine Services Tech Apprenticeship Program. And being able to um, get that across the finish line with Michigan having so many lakes and marinas across the state. Uh, this is really going to be transformational, not only for this area, but for the state as well. So we're proud to highlight their successes here today. And next slide. Uh, this is just a snapshot, so through the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five year, these are dollars that went straight into um, our local employers. To help with their training and new hire needs. Um, there's a variety of different grants here, so Going Pro Talent Fund, that's administered by us. However, the state of Michigan, it's a competitive grant process. They determine who the award winners are and then we just help that employer maximize their award. And so in Livingston County, they were awarded and utilized um, two hundred and thirty-two thousand on-the-job training. We connect an individual that uh, maybe needs just a little more support on the job with an employer. Um, they are hired in their unsubsidized employment and we then help with the um, first, like fifty percent of their onboarding costs. And so we were able to um, almost fifty thousand towards employers for new hires uh, during the year. And then incumbent worker training, that's training to upskill individuals. And with Livingston County taking advantage of the Going Pro Talent Fund, that number's a little bit lower for that reason. Um, they just were able to offset their costs with a different grant. Uh, but in the circle you can see, because of these training dollars, we were able to upscale a hundred and eighty-six individuals. And with that upskilling comes an increase in opportunity, wages, just keeps that pipeline moving. Next slide. All right.
Uh, just to wrap it up, you know, w- this is a collaborative effort. Um, one of the things that didn't get mentioned was, speaking of award-winning, uh, Bowchamp. Uh, Water Treatment was the impact winner, aw- award winner. So across the state, all sixteen Michigan Works agencies nominate one business for a very special day. Where, you know, our state uh, representatives and senators, I think State Representative Wolford came down. Or came over and presented the award to uh, Bowchamp Water Treatment. And so all of that happens in collaboration, but what we really need from this body is your collaboration. Whether it is, you know, a business that's in need of our business services, where we go directly in, listen and help give the appropriate. Uh, tools to that business to continue to grow, whether you know someone who is seeking employment. Um, we try not to talk about jobs, we try to talk about careers. So you may work a job today, but it's building towards a career for you. Uh, and so if you know an individual who needs some uh, assistance, please send them over to twelve-hundred Byron Road. This thing doesn't go without uh, not only yourselves, but everyone under the sound of my voice, understanding. That we are resourcing your community. Uh, we are pretty good at the dollars that we receive. Um, making sure they get into the hands of the people who need them for the reasons they need them. Um, and if you're, know of any community events that we should be a part of. So Dawn is busy, but we want to make her a little busier. So if there's events that you know we should be at, whether it's having an employment table or uh, just talking about our resources. Please don't hesitate, our contact information might be on the, not the next slide, but the second to next slide, so maybe next slide? Well, there it is, all right. Uh, so you can reach Dawn, Misty or myself at any time, there's our email addresses. But we need you to know, we're a resource here for not only you all as a body, but the individuals that you serve. And we do it gladly and happily, and we are proud of the work that we do uh, here in Livingston County and beyond. That concludes our portion of the.
Commissioners, questions, comment, analysis, Commissioner, what, and I agree.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and the, the timing of this. I had a conversation with a, a gentleman I know quite well. Um, lives in Heartland. He just retired. He um, he's, he's um, getting rid of his um, HVAC, HVAC business. He express, has expressed to me over the years, the, a shortage um, of, you know, technicians, specifically in that arena. That he, he knows the arena well. Uh, he, he was a business owner for, I think, thirty or forty years, something like that. Is, would it be possible for, how, how, how can I get him connected to, to you guys? Can I bring him to the next uh, Michigan Works meeting? Can he speak to you then, or is it, is there a better way to do it?
You can bring him to a meeting, you can bring him to the center where he could potentially, it depends on what he's looking to do. So if he's getting ready to sell his business, he needs assistance with being acquired.
No, no, he.
Can the recruit talent?
He wants to help um, develop the workforce, you know, so that, that, you know, he, he knows that there's a need. And he, he wants to, you know, after he gets settled into retirement, he, he, he wants to, I'll say, give back to the.
Well, we have the perfect place for him. We have something that's called a CAC, the Career Advi- uh, Career Education Advisory Committee. And we have, we've been looking for private sector and skilled trades individuals to continue to join. We know that's where the need is. Three hundred thousand open positions in the state of Michigan today for skilled tradespeople. And so we absolutely understand. If you can give him my information, I'll make sure he knows about the CAC if he's interested. That's a place where uh, like minds come together and we figure out how do we continue to educate our young people about the opportunities that are out here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, how's room you have the floor?
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to be on the Michigan Works Consortium Board, I guess is what it's called. Um, and uh, Shamar's done a good job of, of putting together. A new vision for uh, for Michigan Works. Every once in a while, the state shakes up the, the Michigan Works configuration. And I think finally, the new configuration is finally getting figured out. And it's a lot to do with Shamar and his work. Uh, could you address some of the uh, financial struggles you foresee? Uh, with uh, the climate in Washington?
I, I'll speak gingerly because uh, we're in a time of uncertainty. Um, what we know we need to be able to do is prove that our work is bearing positive fruit. And by that, I mean for every individual that Dawn talked about, she worked with. Based on the grants that we receive, that amount needs to continue to get lower. So we become more efficient with our dollars as we serve more people. Year over year, we've taken approximately a seven to ten percent cut in two of our prime, well, one of our primary funding sources. And so uh, with those cuts, we are learning to do more with less. Uh, there are two uh, executive orders that are out here right now that directly impact our work by way of the Department of Labor. One is around transparency. And so I went and looked at the numbers, they're wholly inaccurate. So we're not understanding where they're pulling the information from, not only for us, but the entire state. There's sixteen Michigan Works Agencies in the state, uh, and I can only imagine across the nation, there's workforce development boards. We need to get to the Department of Labor to make sure they understand where to pull the most recent information. This, the numbers still look great in our favor, but we're doing better work. So there's a transparency executive order out right now uh, for the Department of Education. That talks about how we use taxpayer dollars. And so we want to make sure it's accurate so that, you know, w- whether it is uh, just the average resident. Or it's our lawmakers, when they're looking at this, they know they have the most up-to-date information. We're running about two years behind on data. So imagine we're talking about what happened in two thousand and twenty-three, when the economy was where it was versus where we're at right now. We're seeing about a twenty-five percent uptick in individuals coming in our doors. And mind you, we're still doing our work under cuts. The other executive order, and I'll speak quickly, uh, is around the Department of Education, the Department of Commerce and the Department of Labor. Coming together and figuring out how they remove uh, uh, red tape and overlap, right? So they want a more streamlined approach. Uh, and by doing so, right now, the Department of Education is preparing to turn over Title II services to the Department of Labor. So that could be everything from your adult education on over. Uh, and so we need to prepare ourselves to be taking on more of that work, depending, we may get funding, we may not. But we need to be able to have the right people willing to be utility players. So what we do is we try to cross-train. We don't need a lot of uh, unit tools in our uh, organization. We need, we need multi-tools. That's individuals who can do any number of services. And I gotta tell you, Dawn's team uh, does a phenomenal job, but our other four senators do a fantastic job as well. I am extremely proud of the work that I get to help lead uh, on behalf of all five counties and the people who do it.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I look forward to all of you all.
Thank you.
Sending over referrals.
Twelve hundred.
One from each of you.
Twelve hundred Byron Road, right?
Twelve hundred Byron Road.
The, the medical, the old medical center that was right next to the hospital, please come visit us.
Or the dentist office prior to the, after the medical center, right?
It's across the street from the old uh, Inogen Defense Department there on Byron Road.
Okay.
The one that we vacated.
It's on the hospital side.
Yes, right next to the hospital, our parking lots butt right up to each other. If you're looking at the hospital, we're on the right.
Got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for coming in today.
Thank you for being here to.
We're on agenda, uh, item number twelve, Resolutions for Consideration. Twelve A reads two oh two five dash oh eight dash one, one, three. It's a resolution authorizing the change of fee scheduling in the animal shelter twenty-twenty-five. Uh, brought to us by uh, Animal Shelter Department.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Need a motion? Yes, I need a motion. Low consideration. I'm sorry. Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Thomas. Now we can go into discussion and comment, go ahead.
Yes, no, um, as we spoke before about the resolution, it has been five years since we've increased our fees. Um, and these fees are being increased just to cover costs. Um, medical care costs, employee costs have risen over the past five years. Um, that's pretty much the only reason I'm here, is just to make sure we're covering costs. It's not a revenue maker. It's just to that general fund, the budget that we have, to cover that deficit. It's, I mean, clinics are necessary, the community wants them, we need to provide it. Um, it covers the overcut population. Um, but we have to make sure we're covering our costs when we're doing these clinics for the community.
Questions? Commissioner Heserman, proceed.
Some of uh, what, what you do is a public service, you know, and um, is. When, do you have the power to waive, waive these fees? And under certain circumstances, or it, it kind of looks like, you know?
There's always a gray area. So in a situation, again, and a lot of it's working with animal control. So in a situation where um, someone is on hard times, they're great pet owners. And they need assistance with fixing an animal or getting medical up on an animal, um, our officers are like, Chrissy, I really don't want to issue tickets for the dogs not having rabies or a license. Can't get a license without a rabies. Um, we're not going to take that animal. We're not going to bring it to the shelter. We do not need more animals, we're over capacity as it is. Um, I do not need to take their animal from them. Animal Control takes the animal from them, it comes to the shelter. We're now housing another animal, medically putting hundreds of dollars into that animal to get it ready for adoption. So it's more beneficial for us to provide a neuter or a rabies at a reduced fee or no fee to keep that pet in the home. It's beneficial for us number-wise and cost-wise to work with that owner in that situation. There is a gray area.
So how often does a person make an appointment and pay their money and don't show up?
Frequently, for dogs, frequently. So we have a clinic tomorrow, um, everybody said today they will be there. I guarantee you out of the five dogs, three won't show. It is very common for dogs not to show. I don't know why dogs, but it's common for dogs. And that is a spot that's very limited for us. We can only take five dogs per clinic due to cage space. And we have people on a waiting list. Our clinics are booked out four months right now. So somebody who does a dog, who, let's say they're females in heat right now and they're booked out four months from now, that dog takes a chance of getting pregnant now. When somebody's booked tomorrow with their three females, they don't show, that dog could have that spot. So by us wanting this deposit, I think that's going to make people think about it a little bit more. They're going to lose that fifty-dollar deposit by not showing up. But if they do show up, that fifty dollars will come off their receipt that day. We need something to bind them a little firmer to keeping their appointment than not showing.
Okay, so at this point, you don't have the, you pay before and if you don't show up, you lose it.
No, we do not.
So that's, that's a new.
That's.
So they have to put down the money at the time that they make their appointment.
For the dog surgeries, yes, because that's a, that's holding a large space. Cats, most cats show up. I would say ninety-five percent of our cats show up for their surgeries. It's the dogs that are typically no-shows.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was thinking, you'd think the cats wouldn't show up because they're fraidy cats, but.
No.
Apparently you have sixty cat rooms, but you're able to house eighty cats?
That is.
Is that, is that right?
Because we keep them loose. So we have cages, so we keep so many loose. So if you walk into the kitten lobby, there's always some loose and there's some housed. And then we rotate them, and same with the main room. Some are always loose and then we rotate housing.
And nobody in the county pays to license their cat, correct?
No, I would not even want to be in charge of that. It is so difficult to get dog people to license their dogs. No, it's, you're typically, you're, you're big inner cities, California, they license cats. Not many people license cats.
Do you think anyplace in Michigan licenses cats?
Nobody that I know of. I actually, we just had our state inspection and I asked Jordan, our inspector, and she could not think of anyone.
Okay. Do you think there's a power under the current statute, or do you think we'd have to get a statute?
You would have to get a statute. There are no laws for cats.
Okay. I'm complete. Anyone else?
Commissioner Thomas, a question. Do you uh, does the shelter accept exotic pets?
We do not do exotic. We're domestic only. So anything domestic. So we have housed pigs, chickens, ducks, cattle on occasion. Um, snakes, hamsters, anything you get from a pet store, anything on a farm, we're required to take care of. Um, exotics, we've have, had a couple exotics come in and we have to do a temporary straight hold till we find placement. We've had two alligators. We had an um, oxal cat. We've had a couple strange things come in, though we've housed for a few days until we found placement.
I'd be afraid a, a snake would eat one of the hamsters or something.
We get a lot of snakes, you'd be surprised. My, my office was actually recently had nine aquariums in it full of snakes from a veteran who passed away and they were in his house.
Well, you do an outstanding job.
Yeah, well, thank you, because yeah, that was, we're, we're, snakes are not our, our, we're not, we don't love having the snake.
Person.
You, you, you have, the, the whole feeding them the mice thing is not our thing. Yeah, no, no, not, not a huge snake person.
When do you believe the new software is going to be in place?
So I was out last week with a family matter and IT informs me that it's been moved to September twenty-third.
And how long?
The implement, that is the date we are going with, the September twenty-third.
And how long do you think it'll be before you're up and running and it's comfortable with that?
Asked Diane Gregor with that. So Diane Gregor is in charge of IT, she's in charge of that software and she's been working really hard with PetPoint. Um, running reports, that's going to question, I'll have to ask her. It's, it's, this was supposed to have been put in place two years ago, then last year, twice this year already. Um, the biggest issue we're having is the conversion of all of our, our information from EC Plus. EC Plus is a dinosaur software we have. Um, it is very hard to take everything from that and can, use the conversion over into PetPoint. Um, we just actually lost a lot of information in that conversion, so they're trying to piece it back together. Um, our My Dog, which is the county licensing system, does not want to work with PetPoint. They've been trying to figure that out, so we're not selling dog licenses twice. Um, we currently have to sell dog licenses twice. So if someone comes in to purchase a dog license, we sell it in EC Plus. And that's just for revenue purposes. And then we have to sell it in My Dog, and that's for Jenny Nash and for it to actually be logged as a license sold. Um, so we do not want to keep selling dog licenses twice. Of course, that's more. Um, so we do not want to keep selling dog licenses twice, of course, that's more human error when you're selling multiple times. Um, so we've had a few hiccups in the road, but September twenty-third, I'm being told we're good.
And Pet Point is the new.
Is the new software.
But you don't think it works with My Dog at the treasurer?
It's going to be, um, it's not going to work cohesively together, but IT has come up with a program where at the end of the day, they're going to be able to pull all licenses we have sold, and they're going to do their own little conversion.
IT has a solution.
They do, to everything, they're geniuses.
Terrific.
Mr. Chair, one more question.
Proceed.
Do you take animal insurance?
We do not.
Hey, you wouldn't?
We have no way to, no, we, we have no like care credit and things, we have no way to accept that.
How many, do you have people that inquire about it?
We, hmm, my fifteen years I've been there, maybe three or four. Yeah, not, not often, I think, again, when you're paying the fees, like, you know, we're charging, I'm looking to charge ninety dollars for a cat neuter is nothing. So um I'll give you an example, so I did have one veterinarian call me out from um the last meeting when I said that local veterinarians charge around three hundred for a cat neuter. Um he did confront me and said that I was a liar, and so I had him print out um what his fees were at his clinic for a cat neuter. And it was two hundred and twenty-one dollars. And I said, well, do they have to come in for a pre-exam? And he said, well, yeah, I think so. So he had to go check, receptionist's like, yes, I do, it's sixty-two dollars. Was that not around three hundred dollars? He did not know that about his clinic. So effective immediately, I'll give him credit, effective immediately, he removed the pre-exam and that fee, and now they show up the day of for surgery for just the two hundred and twenty-dollar cat neuter. So, and that was the cheaper vet in the area that was around three hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, I'm going to close the discussion. We'll go into voting, and it's a voice vote. All those in favor of resolution ending in one, one, three kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is eight to zero with one absent, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve B reads two oh two five dash oh eight dash one, one, four. It's a resolution for the twenty twenty-five Veterans' Millage from Equalization.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Domas.
For Helsman.
Second by Commissioner Helsman. Any need for presentation? Questions? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deetens absent, Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Brendan, if you come up, I know we need a signature immediately. All signed. Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Commissioners, we're on to number twelve C. It's number two oh two five oh eight dash one, one, five. It's a resolution authorizing the opioid settlement funds to Livingston County Sheriff Office Jail Division for inmate medication assisted treatment. The MAT program brought to us by the Sheriff Department and the jail. Can I get a motion?
No move, Gross. Second. Sample.
Motion by Gross, second by Sample. The uh everyone should have the updated application dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Any questions about the update?
Did you review, I know there have been some questions in the public about the um uh whether this is replacing, and I know we've received some information on that, but but you, Chairman Drick, or, or Nathan, our administrator, address. Address that.
Thank you, Commissioners, Matt Nordford's also with us via Zoom tonight, if it's something that he may want to comment on. Uh the information that I shared with you was information that was from our legal counsel, but also uh concurred with MAC, the Michigan Association of Counties, um about the question of supplanting funds. The funds the state is receiving from the, for the Michigan Opioid Healing and Recovery Fund, state funds cannot supplant existing programs. The guidance we've received is that there's nothing for our settlement funds, which are not the same pot of money as the state's funds. So if we were the state government, we couldn't supplant funds, but we're not. So um that was uh shared both by MAC and by legal counsel, um the, the answer to that question, so. And I don't know if Mr. Nordford has anything to add, but that was the summary on that.
Looks like the sheriff has his head up.
Attorney Norford.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, I was trying to get in there and say just exactly what uh Mr. Byrd said. This is not a, not an issue of supplanting, but I couldn't unmute, thank you.
Attorney Norford?
That is an accurate recitation of our conclusion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My opinion is that the one thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollar per shot that used to be free, we now have to pay for. And I'm guessing that it's not going to be long before uh the grant money, I think it's hundred twenty-five thousand, is going to be chewed up pretty fast at twelve hundred bucks a shot. So I think we're not supplanting, I think we're paying for that uh shot money mostly. Any other discussion or analysis, any comment? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deetens absent, Commissioner Ponovich.
Oh.
And Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're on to item number twelve D. It's numbered two oh two five dash oh eight dash one, one, six. It's a resolution authorizing the fiscal year twenty twenty-six memorandum of understanding and cash matching funding for behavioral health managed care services wraparound program at our juvenile court.
No move, Helsman.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Helsman, support by Domas. Any uh questions for Debbie who's in the audience? Analysis, objections? Seeing none, I'll close discussion, we'll go to voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
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 Any opposed? My ears heard eight ayes, zero nays, and one absence, so we have a passed resolution. We're now down to twelve E, two oh two five dash oh eight dash one, one, seven. It's a resolution authorizing the Register of Deeds Historic Records Digital Imaging Project from microfilm to digital images brought by the Register of Deeds, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Fiani, second by Commissioner Sample. Any uh need to question uh our register of deeds? Any need for presentation? Seeing none, I'll close that, and I would kindly ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deetens absent, Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to twelve F. It's a resolution authorizing an additional contribution to MERS for the Veterans Non-Union Division Fiscal Year two oh two five, brought to us by Veteran Services. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Domas, second by Fiani. Any further questionings, analysis, objections, observations? Commissioner Nakagiri of the floor.
This is a little bit off topic, but still on um unfunded uh pensions. I um would encourage the uh administration to look into uh um I'll say refunding or bringing the funding for the LETS department up to full funding. I, my review of the um recent um MERS documents, that they're a little bit underfunded. Like, if I remember right, it was um three hundred thousand dollars, going by memory. And we do have funding that is still, it was a, an old federal grant that uh we used to bring funding up to uh, let's funding up to a hundred percent. It has gone a little bit unfunded since three or four years ago, and there's some, there's some of that grant money left, and I think uh ha- having studied the issue of unfunded liability, I think uh every, every little bit helps, so that was a request for administration, thank you.
Nathan, thumbs up, you're on it, thank you. With that, I'll close the discussion, and we'll go to a roll call vote for the MERS contribution at, at Veterans.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deetens absent, Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're at twelve G, it reads two oh two five dash oh eight dash one, one, nine. It's a resolution to authorize entering an agreement with SEMCOG in supporting Livingston County Materials Management Plan dash DPW slash solid waste and planning department. Can I get a motion? Motion by Helsman? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fiani. Mr. Spalding, you have the floor.
Um, hi, I uh evidently hope this doesn't go long, because I obviously need to get home to tell my dog she needs to be a little bit more responsible. Um, I uh, I do have on the uh Zoom calls uh for any, any questions, I can do a little explanation. Uh Julie Crivley is the chairperson of the recently formed Material Management Planning Committee, and then there are two people from SEMCOG, I, I have never met them in person, uh Ms. uh Carl, and uh who's the manager of um Bailey, Bailey, I don't see her on there right now, but. Okay, so um the, the first resolution is uh for the Livingston County to um be part of the six other counties for, um and anyone online can chime in if I'm saying something incorrect, or if there's something that needs to be added, um is to, to uh do a uh project with, with uh SEMCOG to create an educational uh pieces, whatever that may be, uh social media, educational videos. And really, they're going to be directed towards our local units of government uh officials, so supervisors, mayors, uh people on township boards, educating them about this material management planning. We've been talking about it, and I've been talking to you guys for uh many months uh about this, so there, we are meeting, we're, we have our third meeting tomorrow, and, you know, we'll, we'll be hiring a consultant here soon and starting the actual plan. And once this plan is, is um approved by the uh committee, we will be putting it out to the townships and the villages and the cities for their approval. We need to have sixty-seven percent uh approval of um of those local units of government. Uh the project with SEMCOG is going to be developing educational materials, so that when we get to that point, there, we can inform them in a, in a positive way, and um with some, you know, some formal and, and professional educational tools. W- we have found SEMCOG to be very beneficial in our office on things just behind the scenes. Their professionalism, they've got great data collection. Um so, you know, we, we really feel, obviously, the uh, uh the planning committee approved this at our July twenty-second meeting to recommend uh the county do this. Uh it's eight, about eight thousand eight hundred dollars, and that's our portion. Uh it was prorated, and, and the uh calculations are, were in the packet of how it was prorated, so um obviously Wayne County is going to be paying a little bit more of it based upon a population, but there's certain core principles of it that are getting, you know, split seven ways. Um so we're asking for approval for this, our, uh we will be able to, uh to apply for the uh MMP grants from the state of Michigan. We have been assured that this is an allowable expense um for, for that, so we don't have any concerns about this not being reimbursed as part of our um grant process. The, the way the timing is, is we can't get the money before we get the grant. The state is actually looking at our work plan right now. Once that's approved, we will be, we're going to be talking about it tomorrow, we'll be um ready to apply for the grant, and um once we get the grant, then we can do submission. So there's going to be a little lull here uh between uh, between having the funding. Uh SEMCOG is not looking for a check, they're just looking for a commitment from us. Um and I don't know, they may want to chime in, I don't know how many of the other six.
Hi, Kelly.
Thank you, thank you, Rob, hi, everybody. Um Commissioners, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Kelly Carl, I manage our Environment and Infrastructure Group at SEMCOG. Um I thought I would just kind of respond in general to, I did see some of the questions that you had, and just maybe give a little bit more background, just about kind of what we're looking at, how we're working this project. Um traditionally, much of our work on public education is focused around water and transportation. This is a little bit of a unique project, um entering into all of these materials management planning activities with all seven counties in our region. Uh we are working monthly with um the solid waste coordinators at each of the seven counties. Uh so they're really going to help guide the work and some of the content of the work and the needs for outreach and education from elected officials at the local communities. Um I'd like to offer and say that really, I look at this as kind of an economies of scale. You know, we have a lot of experience in, in developing public education campaigns in the region. Our communications team um is very adept at taking technical information and simplifying it out for both the public and for elected officials. Um they've done a number of public education campaigns, we have Safe Streets, we have One Water, and their expertise has transcended over tens of millions of impressions across videos and social medias. We are, social media, we are planning videos, um one to two videos for this campaign that we'll be embarking on. And um most recently, our communications team in particular was awarded an Emmy Award with the video, so we really try to take technical information, distill it down simply, and even in a fun way, to deliver uh messages that are clear and simple, and as I mentioned, sometimes fun. Um with that being said, we really enjoy working with all of our county partners, you know, on this, and certainly open and willing to answer any questions on the details, but there was a question on the scope. Certainly, we're working with the counties to help derive what might be in that scope in terms of the specifics on outreach and education, what kind of video, what kind of training, or web, um web-based training, or even a workshop, or even some of the materials and the messaging. So it's really a collaborative effort with our county partners. And I'm happy to entertain any questions, if you have any.
I have, I have.
Commissioner Helsman.
I have kind of an unrelated question. Uh it sounds like SEMCOG has uh an ability to make analysis and to do research. This is just an idea. In Livingston County, we uh and the uh Drain Commission are dealing with uh the possible uh thousands of acres going into solar, uh solar, and uh I think our Drain Commission and uh people on this commission would like to have some study uh so that we can understand our runoff now and the potential changes. and the potential changes in runoff for solar. And I know that's not the discussion here, but I'm just, you know, just to open up maybe for you to think about is, is there such a, Rob, do you know of any research? Or does SEMCOG have the ability to do that sort of research?
Yes. I've actually been in communication with your Drain Commissioners Office on this topic a little bit. There's not a lot of research out there quite yet. So we are compiling and working with a couple of consultants that have compiled some of that information. We do have a new environmental tool that helps to calculate runoff impacts that we'll be rolling out this fall to all of our members that we worked with a couple of consultants on, showing both impacts and some of the options for mitigation. And that might be one way to look at potential runoff impacts. I would offer that we have discussed internally about the option of just doing a little bit more research on those runoff impacts and, you know, putting together some sort of memorandum that could be beneficial to all of our county members and communities. And you've hit the nail on the head. It's a big concern and a big issue that we're really trying to explore and research.
Because I, you know, I, and I think the commission would, and I think the Drain Commission would appreciate any help in research and finding out the numbers and how, you know, it looks like we may not be able to stop it, but at least we should be ready for the contingencies that may be negative that come along with it. Thank you.
Exactly.
Sure.
Commissioner Fiani. And I see you, Commissioner Gross.
Does SEMCOG currently have access to any sort of grant funding for technology enhancements or technology infrastructure upgrades pertaining to transportation?
That's a topic I'd really have to explore with our transportation team. I mean, we do a lot of research for grant funding. But in terms of technology upgrades, I know there's been some discussion about that and I can certainly get back with you on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gross. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob, in your presentation, you mentioned that you need to get, we need to get 67% of the township, cities and villages to agree to this. How soon will that process be starting soliciting their approvals?
We're probably at least a year out from that.
A year out?
Mm-hmm.
And how much time will you have for them to be able to respond?
I don't know. Julie, do you know the review period by chance? I could get back with you on, there was a graph charting out this whole process. I could get back with you on how much time the townships will have or the local units will have to approve this or disapprove it.
Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. I think it's about six months after they get it. But Rob's right, we're probably looking at least a year and a half to two years out before we're going to get serious about this because we have a lot of steps in front of us still.
Okay. Thank you. One follow-on question, and this is probably more for Nathan or Cindy Urbana's online. The amount of money that we're paying, $8,000 and change, is relatively small, but it's coming out of general fund contingency with a payback provision. We've got four months left in our fiscal year. Can we afford to pay this out now?
Yes.
Thank you.
I won't elaborate too much, but it's not a real threat to our overall contingency amount at that.
Just a little worried that in the next four months, if something comes out of the woodwork, we might be scrambling.
I think we're going to be okay. I'll let you know if that changes. But the $8,000, I could not classify that as a concern out of our contingency count.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Anyone else? I have a bit of heartburn. It suggests, the document suggests that SEMCOG will be creating videos, stories, educational pieces, webinars, workshops, but there's nothing in the one-page commitment of funds that tell us how many or how many per year or at whose expense these things are going to be created. Maybe it's the $8,000 bucks. There's also no specificity of what we get for the money. It seems to be vague. There's no deadline dates for SEMCOG to act. Apparently, they can take our money upfront. And sometime out within three years, we start getting some benefit. As the paperwork stands, I also see that we're going to spend possibly 60K on a consultant. And I'm wondering why we need to have, hire a second consultant before we even try our first consultant that we're supposed to hire. So there's a portion of what the resolution is asking me to sign. And there's a place that says, please let us know if you require additional information. I would like a little bit of authorization to flesh that out before we sign if that's the will of the board to sign. And I think that the last whereas should become a therefore be it resolved. Because then it's certain that the grant funding has to be executed so that we've got a shot at getting our money back. So I'd like that amendment. And then just an understanding that it's okay for me to continue to ask a few questions. I make the motion that the last whereas be turned into a therefore be it resolved.
Support.
Thank you. Discussion on that amendment.
Tell me the amendment. I deserve the amendment.
The last whereas really should be a therefore be it resolved. That protects us a little bit.
Say that again. The last whereas be it further resolved.
There are 10 whereases. Instead of 10 whereases, I'd make it nine whereases. And the 10th whereas, change it to therefore be it resolved.
Oh, okay.
Then that information is part of what we voted into effect. That just protects us some.
You have a hand up.
May I provide a little clarification?
It's out of order, but I'll let you for this instance. Go ahead.
My apologies. The budget that's there is dedicated for SEMCOG's this fiscal year. So it will, while your materials management planning is over a three-year timeframe, we will be developing the information this campaign over our fiscal year, which is this July through June of 2026. And as part of the scope, we're working directly with the staff at the counties to refine and define the scope. Our communications group has a lot of experience in these. That's where the initial budget came from. Refining the scope in terms of the details of what the counties are interested in in terms of whether it's paper materials, handouts, webinars, videos. We're already talking about one to two short videos, which are always very popular. We're refining the scope. So the scope is going to be influenced directly by the county staff. And, you know, we'll move forward once we have that refined exactly with all the county staff input. So hopefully, that helps to clarify some of the questions that you.
Are you amending the memorandum that was presented to us dated August 21 where the question is, the work plan mentions a three-year term. Is the $8,788 future payment meant to cover all three years? The memo says yes. The $8,788 covers all three years. Are you saying now it does not and it just goes to June of 26?
No, I'm just saying that the timeframe covers your materials management planning. But we're actually, we're not going to take three years to get this work done. We're going to get the work done within our first fiscal year. So that you, this materials can be used during the timeframe of the materials management planning process.
So when we need the materials, they will be ready?
Yes. Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
It's starting early to educate the community so that you have buy-in as this starts to move forward and as you're starting to develop this plan.
Thank you. There's an amendment on the floor that we're discussing. It's to change the last whereas into a therefore be it resolved. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion about that amendment? Seeing no hands, there'll be a voice vote. All those in favor of that change kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing eight to zero to one absent. So that amendment is changed. Now, we have to vote on the amended resolution in total. And I think we, SEMCOG gets a voice vote. No, I take it back, a roll call. I see it now. Roll call, please. Go ahead.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deetens absent. Commissioner Ponovich. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 12H on the agenda. It's number 2025-08-120. It's a resolution approving the 2025 to 2030 Livingston County Materials Management Plan Work Program - DPW/Solid Waste and Planning Department. Can I get a motion?
Move Gross. Support Helserman.
I'm hearing motion by Gross, support by Helserman. Any discussion? Any need to do a presentation? Any questions, analysis? Seeing no hands, a voice vote will be sufficient. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing eight, zero, one passing. Where at the 12 letter, aye. It's 2025-08-121. Thank you, Rob. It's a resolution proclaiming September 17 through 23, 2025, as Constitution Week in Livingston County. Can I get a motion?
Move Sample. Support Domas.
Motion by Sample, support by Domas. Any questions, analysis or other information? Seeing no hands.
My question is, what, is this a more proclamation as opposed to meeting or whatever? We're just encouraging citizens to do? Now, let's just.
It's a suggestion that the citizens of the county recognize the importance of the week.
I would just make a comment. Follow-up news and views is welcomes comments from the public. I will be planning to talk about this in my article. And they've encouraged people to write letters to the editor.
Thank you.
Encourage my colleagues to do it also.
The other comment, analysis, question, objection?
Seeing none, we'll go to, I'll close discussion and we'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing eight to zero to one, Resolution 12, aye passes. Next up is item number 13, Accounts Payable Reports. 13A reads claims dated August 25, 2025. 13B reads payables dated August 1 through August 14, 2025. Can I get a motion for 13A and B?
Move Gross.
Motion by Gross, second by, second by Commissioner Domas. All those in favor kindly voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
I'm hearing eight, zero and one absent. 13A and B both pass. We're at item number two, which is Call to the Public, which is a two-minute call. We'll start with anyone that may have a card presented to our clerk. You may read the cards.
Steve Williams, Marion Township.
Hey, hello again. I got an update during the meeting. That phone time, that by-court order is designated for 6:30 to 7 o'clock at night was denied again. So we still have no idea where Gavin is. I forgot to mention earlier that Heather did call for a welfare check with the state, our Sterling Heights Police Department last night. They were unable to conclude that because, of course, the house is empty. Regarding Commissioner Nakagiri's remarks, I don't know about staffing levels and if they're too high or not in the courts. I do know it is taking forever. All right? If you've been through divorce before, you understand that every three years, by Michigan law, there is a review authorized of child support, right? That review was scheduled for the summer of 2023. Now, because the case was shifted from a Colom to Livingston, it was delayed a few months. Still has not been concluded. There has been hearing after hearing after hearing because the person who's absconded with the child refused to provide documentation. And if you Google Forrest Putman, Forrest with two R's, Putman not spelled like the township, but spelled P-U-T-M-A-N, you will see a dozen federal and state tax liens in four Michigan counties. And yet, our judge will not hold him to account. And finally, we thought we had an ending last Thursday. And there was a hearing because the referee had prepared a very detailed report and recommendation. And the judge decided not to accept that. So for the second time, she's overruling her own referee, who I think has been doing this for decades. You know, people say, oh, she doesn't have experience in the family court, which is no excuse, but the referee does. So she's going to look this over, maybe review the hearings that were held before at the Judicial Center. And the next hearing date is set for November 5, okay? Justice is supposed to be swift. It is not happening that way in Livingston County. That's going to be a full two years. And this is just being postponed because that three-year period starts when it was finally concluded. Thank you.
Any other cards that you might have?
Do not have any more cards.
Thank you. Krista, see you any hands?
No, Commissioner, I do not. On, it just came up, Luan Laffro.
Excuse me, I didn't hear the name.
We, Luan Laffro.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I would like to thank the commissioners for the proclamation for Constitution Week. That's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other hands, Krista?
No, Commissioner, I do not have any other hands.
And I also agree, I see no hands. Call to the Public, item 14 is now closed. I believe the last item after that is item 15, Commissioner Comments. Any commissioner wish to comment tonight? I'm seeing no hands. Next up is item number 16. Can I get a adjournment?
Support Nakagiri.
Motion by Helserman, support by Nakagiri to adjourn. All those in favor kindly voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Eight to zero to one, we stand adjourned. Thank you kindly. Thank you kindly.